Started. Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Bluff Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting. This evening is Wednesday, February 7th, 2024. We're meeting virtually. The time is 6:04 and we're beginning our meeting. So we'll start with the roll call. This is Amanda Podmore, Chair.
Marcia Hayden.
Ed Dobson.
Malia Collins.
Thank you. And then from Town Council.
Luann Hook.
Welcome, Luann. And thanks to Craig for being here for AV and then Mr. Hanson, who we'll get to in a second. I'm just noting Kathleen is not on. I had emailed her. Does she text? Does anybody? Marcia's gonna text her. Okay.
Since Craig's on, she can do a.
Do it afterward. Wonderful. And Brian Whitney has an excused absence this evening as a Commissioner. So, okay. Without further ado, we will open up public comment period to folks, which is three minutes per comment. Mr. Hanson will invite you to go first, and I will preface this with saying, I believe you and I had talked about you being on this agenda, but I apologize, I didn't confirm with you nor send you the agenda, so. But you're still muted, if you don't mind unmuteing. And then we'll give you the floor.
Because that was a very funny joke I just dropped. No, you're absolutely fine. Yeah, so Mike Hanson, I'm with the Hanson Planning Group. And I believe that we're on contract, I think that's where we're at with Bluff, to help you all with your subdivision ordinance update. The crux of the initiative is the state passed a bill last year that requires every municipality to update their subdivision code to certain standards. And we have been through your code already. And I guess I think I am on contract. Anyway, so we've done an initial report. I don't know if you all have seen that, but in the next meeting, it does not have to. In fact, we would recommend you don't go fast on this, but in a coming meeting, have us come and just visit with you about some of those points the state has still let the cities make decisions on. And once we have that work done, then our team will go ahead and redline your ordinance that you've got today and send it back your way for consideration and so forth. The reason why I will just, I'm preaching this to every town we work with. Go slow if you can. If you can wait, just wait a little. There was a bill that came out Tuesday night this week. And it's a cleanup bill that made it messier. Just sorry, don't put that in the minutes, but that's really the way we read it. Certain parts of it were good for a town like Bluff, and then there's a whole lot of question marks. My smart guy, that's a technical term, but my smart guy on subdivisions has been reading it over and over, and he still doesn't understand how this cleanup bill makes it better. There's just some really weird stuff about infrastructure and some financing there, but anyway, that's why we say just wait a little. You've got till the end of February for the legislative session to finish. And so we would just suggest, let's see if this bill gets any traction and finishes before we get too serious, because they might be moving the finish line on you and such.
Okay. Can you, and so, folks, we're not allowed to have a discussion here, but we appreciate the update from Mike and his comment period. Can you remind us the deadline, the current deadline for that?
Yes. The current deadline, the real deadline for a town of your population size is December of 2024. So we have time to get you compliant. The new bill that just passed moved it up to November, if it passes as is. But again, this bill hasn't even been in the committee yet. It just rolled out with some language. A lot can change in a month with that legislature, so. Basically, I don't think the main parts of the bill are going to change, but I'm really hoping that certain parts that are in there will change for you. So, yeah, let's just, unless you have imminent development coming your way and you really want to put something in place, I would suggest we just kind of take a good pace on this one. But again, we work for you. We'll do as much or as little as you need us to, so.
And, okay, thank you so much. Marcia, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to clarify, there are a bunch of changes we need to make, but this new bill may make either more or less out of those changes.
Exactly. We don't want you guys to change it, and then we come back and have you change it again. But one of the changes, I'll just briefly tell you, one of the changes is a really good one. Right now, under state statute today, you know, the one that was adopted last year, the city would have a 15-day turnaround. So in other words, an application comes in, city has to review that in 15 days. And so if the city had, you know, a public hearing as part of their process, you, as a planning commission, would have to pull together a meeting within that 15 days after staff has reviewed it and engineers looked at it or whatever. That's just a really tight turnaround for smaller towns, you know, that meet monthly, for example, and they don't have staff waiting around for stuff to do. The new bill, it's called House Bill 476, if you want to keep an eye on it. That moved it to 30 days. So still not the easiest thing in the world, but it's, that's what we said. We were hoping this bill would come out in that direction and kind of open things up a little bit. Still, 30 days is pretty quick, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. And Luann, just no, only questions, no discussion, just.
I just want to say that we do meet electronically usually, but we can be in person. If you're in the area, we'd love to be in person with you. And then also, just to acknowledge, we did get your summary.
Oh, perfect.
And Z's gotten, but we got it through the council.
Great. Yeah, take a look at that. I think there was a extra bullet point. You guys got a bonus one. It didn't relate because we put it in there twice. But yeah, I was looking at that. Your code, if you read it just at the highest level, your code's not actually that far off of where the state would like you to be, so. That said, there are also parts that every town gets to deal with, and we'll come down and I don't know if you're gonna want to do that one in person or whatnot, but that will be, maybe put that on your agenda as a, it's gonna be a discussion, honestly, so.
Work session, maybe.
Yeah. And with your town council, if we can get them there.
Well, thank you. I'm glad it worked out for you to go attend to what is most important right now, so.
Well, I gotta do that for sure, but I appreciate you, and I'll bounce off.
All right.
Be careful. Travel safe.
Thanks, guys.
Take care. Would anybody else like to give a public comment? Okay, and welcome, Kathleen. Okay, let's move into, and just, we can discuss the, Mike Hanson, a little bit more during our other bullet for tonight, but for now, let's move into approval of meeting minutes. So the first one up is the January 5th work session, so let me share my screen. I don't know if we have any comments on this one. It was a shorter meeting about the sign regulations. Any comments from folks?
I moved to approve the draft minutes of January 5th work session as presented.
And a second from Ed, it sounded like. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes with four ayes. Thank you. Next up, we have the work session minutes from a lot of work sessions, January 11. Can you guys hear that? Okay. Another work session, working on the sign ordinance. No comments on this. It looks like anybody, any final comments or changes to these?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second by Malia. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes from Thursday, January 11th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes unanimously with four yeses. And then lastly, is our meeting minutes from the, well, the minutes from the sign ordinance public hearing. So thank you, Kathleen, for taking all those down. I did want to, I wanted to correct the email address in case anybody was looking at these and wanted to submit comments. Otherwise, I don't know if we, and then I think Pam Yaros' name was spelled wrong, but I'm not sure how you spell it.
Oh, yeah, Y-E-A. R-O-U-S?
Okay, okay, great. Any, any other changes to these minutes from the sign ordinance public hearing?
Looks great. I motion to approve. Move to approve.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes from the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ed, I didn't hear from you.
Yeah, hi.
I, okay, great. All right. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, we have a good full agenda tonight. Let's start with an update from Town Council. I'll turn it over to you, Luann.
Okay. You guys have had a lot of work sessions since your last regular meeting, and we've had a few meetings in between. So I kind of bumped them all together to give you a quicker summary. The new council members were put on to the force, and that's Britt Hornsby and Jen Davila. Jen is replacing the active transfer, or Jen is going to be on the school committee for the CCC, the CCC. She'll be doing that, and she'll also be taking over the treasurer, so basically Brant's things. And then Britt is going to be on the active transportation committee, or is already, and he will also be the mayor pro tem. Is the mayor pro tem. So that update. And then the AmeriCorps group has been in town. They've been working hard out at the community gardens, at the community center, and at the CCC. They, and they've also worked some over at the Bluff Community Foundation, doing work different places. So and they're here till the 21st, I believe. We gave local consent to Bluff dwellings for an on-premise liquor license for banquets. They requested, again, we had approved them before, and they hadn't moved forward when COVID hit, so that's through. Elaine Gisler gave us a big presentation on housing. She's real passionate about getting housing and studying it. She was awarded a fellow, they call them. Two and a half years, he'll be here, independent contractor to study housing in the region. Goulding's, she's concerned about Goulding's impact if they are not on private property, if they become part of the reservation. The impact on taxes and whatnot through the flow of transient taxes and Bluff Water Works, a lot, most of us went to that meeting. They've hired Gary Lichtenstein and Quality Evaluation to do, to facilitate a strategic plan. They want to look at their secondary water rights, current systems and funding upgrades that might be needed in the future. The strategic plan for Bluff is still in the process, and we've got a work session coming up pretty soon. I don't have that date. I think it's in a few weeks, but they will help us again to move forward on what we need to implement. The CCC, the CCC, the EPA grant and the state grant, both of those are still flowing through and working on those. We have a work session on Friday to kind of confirm some of those projects to make sure the grant is what we need. Then the subdivision code, we do have that, so if you guys have not gotten that in your email, I'll make sure I'll forward that to you. It was a summary of their points, so I'll do that tonight. And then they said there'll also be some building permit changes to San Juan County and the ELCs, and maybe you know more about that. That was the only update, is that there will be some changes coming down the pike. We did sign the letter, the Town Council signed the letter of support for the larger regional bike pedestrian trails as part of that 1,000-mile bike trail network in the state. So we've got that. We've been collecting those. Excuse me. Then the sign ordinance, the hearing went very well. Heard a lot of appreciation for all of your work and listening and the work that you've done on it. There's a little bit of concern for the timing and that the mayor asked me to pass on. Let's see. Yeah, and then on this subdivision, the idea is that it is in your court, so. But I think it's smart to let that settle out before you take off and try to get too much going, but it was great to have him here. So, anyway, I believe that's all that is impacting you guys. Marcia?
I just, one quick question was, have you had any discussion with Kristin Richnell now that she's planning head at at San Juan County? I know Scott O'Butt says that we have to update some things. Have you heard anything?
That's, that's the extent of what I've heard. I personally know she's working up there, but all that I know is that, that there's some changes coming, is all that Ann said. So she's been in contact with her, but.
Okay, great.
That's the all that I have.
Okay, thank you.
And I can speak to that a little bit more later on the agenda, Marcia. Well, awesome, Luann, if you can send us that subdivision report, because we haven't seen that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I might be able to do it now, so.
And we won't schedule him again until March or so, but, yeah.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Gosh, I feel bad. I don't know where he drove from.
He probably had some other towns he was working on, I bet, but it sounds like it turned out.
Okay. Next, under Old Business Item 2, is a discussion on requirements for dirt-moving activities within the town boundaries, and so back in early January, I did go to the Town Council and ask them if we, if they had any direction for us on dirt-moving requirements, if that was something we should be considering as an ordinance, and if so, maybe the scale of that, how technical that should get into geological hazards. And there was you know, some kind of moderate interest in having future discussions, but it was not necessarily seen as a priority for the town, and so generally, I think, Luann, if I'm getting this wrong, let me know, but I think the Town Council's response was, why don't you come to us with a plan for the year? And we can talk about that. So we have been very caught up in our sign ordinance process that we haven't done year planning, so hopefully we can get to that at the next meeting. Any other thoughts or questions on that dirt-moving piece?
Amanda, I just wanted to say that at least I heard quite a bit of sort of negative feedback, as it were, in order to have people saying, why are you telling us where to put dirt? And my thought was that maybe all we need is a sentence somewhere in our updated codes eventually that says, any earth moving cannot impact your neighbor's boundaries, you know, that kind of thing. Because that was actually the one thing that sort of caused us to talk about it. So I'm just throwing that out there as a comment for our discussion later.
Thanks, Marcia. Anybody else, any thoughts on that dirt moving? Okay. All right, next on our agenda then, item three under Old Business is next steps on RV ordinance and dirt-moving ordinance. Those are the, you know, for folks not on planning and zoning, we've been working on three different ordinance drafting all at the same time, but suddenly the sign ordinance took precedence because of the moratorium, so. Question is, when, next steps for addressing RV ordinance and others? Any thoughts from the commissioners? Marcia, go ahead.
I think we should put together our goals list for the next meeting and set those goals to say, sign ordinance done, then RV, then never dirt moving, or some dirt moving, we don't know. In other words, put them in order to get them done, because sign is absolutely where we are for this probably next two weeks while we finish, and then have it ready to go for going back and getting things done.
I totally agree. Malia or Ed, anything you would add or suggest otherwise?
That sounds wonderful.
All right, thanks, Ed. Okay. Then we'll move on to item four, discussion on the draft sign ordinance and next steps. So we still have a couple days left in the comment period for the draft sign ordinance, so FYI for the public, you are still welcome to submit comments via email or mail to Planning and Zoning Commission that expires on, I think it's, does February 10th sound right? Or 11th?
The 11th.
February 11th. Thank you, Kathleen. Great, so through February 11th, close of business, you're welcome to send in some comments, and all those comments will be considered as we finalize that draft. I have two thoughts for us today. One, I'm hoping maybe we could each be working on a few thoughts or proposed edits to the draft in this sort of like interim period, so maybe we can each sort of like assign some research or responsibilities today, and then also be great to schedule another work session, so we can finalize that, maybe work session and/or special meeting to finalize that. Marcia, go ahead.
I just want to say, Malia did an incredible job of updating some of this stuff after the after the public hearing. She sent me a copy and she and I just sort of tore through it a little bit, and she had just really plugged in a few of the comments that people had made in terms of helping to fix a couple of things. So we've already got, you know, updating and updating going, so. But I mean, I agree with you, if there's something we can work on so that when we're together, it's fun.
Thank you, Malia. That's awesome.
Sure thing.
Nice. What are, what are some of the bigger things you've been working on, Malia, just so we?
Okay, would you mind if I just shared the draft and just kind of showed you what I've, what I've been working on? So as you guys are aware, I was taking notes at the meeting, and so at the, after the meeting, the next day, I was going through and just going through our draft and typing it and putting comments on the things that seem to be the the bigger points that people were making. So I did a little bit of editing. I guess I'll go to this, to this commercial sign table, and you'll see that I typed in the number 86 square feet, and I'm going to tell you where I got that number from, because this number came from the business owners of Bluff had asked us to cite the, oh, I can't remember their names, USSC, a sign commission that does a lot of research, and I was reading through quite a bit of their research, and they had recommended, based on our speed limit, and if it was a 20-letter sign, I did all the way here at the bottom, sorry if I'm making you dizzy. I did a lot of math. It was kind of fun. Coming up with these on-premise signs, how large the signs should be, depending on the speed of travel in our town, which will give us the feet per second, blah de blah de blah, and then it goes into the viewer reaction distance, the letter height, and the average letter height that I looked up was like 15, average was 30, and it's determined by illumination, font, letter, background color, all caps, mixed, upper and lowercase, and so I did a, I just did a standard 30, just because that's typically what it is, just so we'd have some sort of numbers to go by. And then it actually, for someone to see a sign, it has to have 60% of empty space and 40% of letters, and so if you're to go down and have a sign that has 20 letters, I, results are down here. So if the speed limit is 40 miles per hour, which is where we're at with with 30 letters, 128 square feet. If it's at 20, here's the 40 miles per hour at, or with 20 letters, 86 square feet. And so then I was like, wait. One of the other big discussions that we had was no one likes, not no one. There is a big discussion about the speed limit being 40 miles per hour, and we, a lot of us would love to see it go down to 30. So I was like, hey, what if we ran the numbers for 30 miles per hour? So I ran a couple of, ran the numbers for 30 miles per hour with 20 letters, and that is where we got the 48 square feet probably in that last ordinance, because numbers, I mean, we love numbers. We love when they can figure out exactly where they came from, so. If we were to, yeah, so this is something, one of my thoughts, after I finished working on this, was if we were to put some sort of clause in here about trying to get the speed limit down, and maybe we put like a waiting period of let's wait and see if by the end of 2024, we can't get our speed limit down, or the end of 2025, whatever it is, can't get our speed limit down to 30, because then the numbers prove that a 48-square-foot sign is adequate for drawing people's attention, giving them enough time to slow down, turn around, make those driving maneuvers that they can pull into a business, and give them their monies, which is what the whole point is. So that's one of the big things I kind of came up with. Another thing I was reading from the USSC is, instead of talking about a maximum height from the ground, is that they do a minimum height from the ground for visibility and effectiveness of the sign, because what's the point of a sign if it's not effective? And so if you have effective signs, then the mindset is you probably won't need as many signs. So more things to ponder, kind of chew on for a little bit until our work session, or if you have any comments about it now. I also made an extra table that I don't think I want anymore after running those numbers, but it was kind of a thought process of, I found it in that USSC of letter height in inches and the maximum sign height to the top of the sign from the road and not necessarily from the ground, because if you think about, because that was something else they said, sorry, so many things. That was something else that they had said was to make the sign height from the road as opposed to the ground, and just two examples, if you think about the monument sign at Desert Rose, it's like the style of sign that says Desert Rose Inn and cabins and in suites, I can't remember exactly what that last word is, I think it's cabins. But their sign is actually off of the road, or is elevated because of the landscape there, and so they have a good visibility because of how high that sign is off of the road. But then drive further down the road, and then you can see Canyon Smokehouse. They are actually lower than the road, and so that would give them some fair fairness when it comes to the signs, that all of the signs are based on the road, not the land that you have, and what the geologic level of it is.
Okay, wow, thank you. Good work. Anything else that you added that, like, maybe not related to sign height? Were there any other, like, has anybody added kiosks yet?
Yeah.
Good. Malia, I just sent you guys the Tina answer, and that was that Malia and I said, if we're going to put kiosk, we need some information on sizing, and we were using Tina's example of the River Trail sign. We haven't put that in yet, because I just got the answer. So that would be a good thing to just continue talking about. However, we did add it to the definitions.
Oh, great, okay.
So there were a couple of letters like that, there was Tina's letter with a couple of comments, and then I think I sent you Jennifer's today, too, from the other day. So I think I was so pleased with the comments we got, because they were specific and had ideas, even, you know, we may not take them all, but at least they were good, well-presented ideas.
Yeah, constructive, absolutely. So is there, let's hear from Luann and then I have a question for everybody. Luann, go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry. I just wanted to say that's interesting information on the speed limit, and I want you to know that that was the recommendation from Bike Utah in our active transportation plan that goes to UDOT is to lower the speed limit from 40 to 30. So that's, that's the plan that's in effect, is to lower.
Awesome.
But Luanne, do we have any hope of that really happening, do you think, in as much as we've had so many discussions with them over the years?
We do now because of this new, that active transportation plan and getting speed slowed down for safety of bicycles and pedestrians. So they'll, they'll know February 9th if ours is in the top priority and then we'll know in March if ours is picked. But as soon as they start doing any of that, that will reduce the speed should reduce with that. They should follow the plan that they've requested.
Interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me comment.
Yeah. Okay. So are there any other things that folks want to work on in the meantime drafting, adding to the draft ordinance before we, before our next work session? Marsha, go ahead.
I don't have anything specific except to say that what was offered to us from the people who spoke like Bob and then Tina, you know, all of these things bring us to discussions at a work session, you know, meaning we want to make sure we all like the word kiosk and the measurement and put it in. So if we all could just go through and find a few of those things and put them in comments, then those will lead to the discussions of a work session, I think. We're so close.
We are.
Because I know when Malia and I looked at just the few things she had, plus the discussions we heard, it changed my mind on a bunch of stuff like, oh yeah, people want bigger signs instead of more signs. Well, that's a good idea. Or, you know, in other words, those are good things to discuss and put in there.
Yeah. So why don't we move to scheduling the work session? I'm wondering if, I think we might be ready, ready or able to do a special meeting where, where we vote. Like if we scheduled an hour and worked for 45 minutes and then we're ready to bring it to a vote to recommend a town council. I think it's reasonable to think we could do that in one session. Do folks agree with that?
I do.
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
Okay. So knowing that the public comment period closes on Sunday, the 11th, but that Brian tends to not be available in the days of Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. I'm wondering if we should meet on Thursday, the 15th. Or that gives us time to read all the comments, but I don't know if that's too late for folks.
No, I, I think Thursday, we've had some good meetings on Thursday or Friday or whatever it's been where we can all get together. And I defer to you working folks again.
I mean, we're already for the 16th if we can. Yeah, just that Friday, the next day.
That you do.
Schedule looks like.
You want the 16th or you don't want the 16th? You do?
Yes, the 16th, please. Unless we did fifth, the 15th in the evening, I do have the mobile unit that I'm working in that day.
Okay. Yep. I don't have a preference between morning of the 16th or evening of the 15th. What about other folks?
I can do either.
Let's do that. Let's do the evening then. Why don't we do 6:00, 6:00 PM on the 15th? Would that work for you, Malia? Or is that too early?
That should work for the sake of pickleball. Maybe make it like 6:15 or 6:30 so they don't have to wrap up early.
6:30 on the 15th? Is our folks okay working 6:30 to 7:30? And so we will schedule that as a special meeting so we can take a vote at that.
Do we know if Brian is working on Thursdays?
I don't think he is. I'm sure he's not. I'll confirm with him though.
Okay.
Alrighty. Okay, wonderful. And so yeah, we're already past the moratorium deadline anyway. So we're moving as fast as we can at this point, but I think I think this, this is good for us.
Yeah, which brings up, have we had the attorney tell us what to do on some of that stuff yet? Have we had the enforcement information from Chris or looked at or anything?
He has not responded to me. I'll try then.
Thanks. Sorry.
All right. Anything else on the draft sign ordinance? Okay. Let's move on to new business. Item five, land use clearance applications. We do not have any applications in, Marsha, we did, do you want to talk about the one that you received?
This was a great, this was a great one, you guys. This was a request from some people in London in, in the UK and they wrote to say that they needed the next steps for how to put RV, an RV park on their land, which was on 3,000 South and South 191 and Highway 262. So I said, and I opened the map and I went da, 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 and I went in circles and I wrote back and I copied Amanda just so she'd know. And I said, thank you so much for asking, but where are you and what are you talking about? Because I'm just not finding 262 within Bluff because I know it's, and it's Monizuma Creek and it's a side of things. So they wrote back and said, well, here's the map and here's, so sure enough, it was their Brad Bunker survey piece and it showed, and it's the highway and it's the highway. And I'm like, what? So I just got, and I sort of called Brad Bunker this morning and I said, hi, I'm feeling stupid, but I'm lost. And he cracked up and he said, aha, it's 262, which I knew came out of Monizuma Creek and it's something is in fact our highway at the dump. In other words, coming out at the bottom of White Mesa Highway when you, you know, drop off, that's 262 coming out of where we knew it was. So sure enough, they own the land after, north of the dump and at the foot of the hill and they actually own the track B, which is across the street where you see people park all the time. It was sort of an old gravelly looking place. So I was like, Brad, thank you. And he said, I'm at the county also, so be sure and just tell them to get in touch with me again and I'll direct them. I said, great, perfect. So I did that and I wrote to the people and said, thank you so much for asking, but, and they just laughed and sent it one back and said, no problem. We'll ask Brad. The main reason to bring it up to us today is just to remind us how close we are to someone wanting to put RVs somewhere. So it was good. We're all set. Thank you.
Nice. Thanks for, for all the soothing on that, Marsha. Okay. Any other thoughts or questions on land use clearances from the commission? Okay. Item six. So this is an update from, from the town manager and the mayor, just that we've received an economic development recurrent grant that like covers some of the construction costs at the CCC. So that, and that's covering like creating a childcare center, satellite office space, retail artists, gallery space. And they, the way the grant was written and finalized, they're, they have, the reporting body is planning and zoning. So what that means is once a year, they're going to send a report to us and we basically are going to have to recommend to the town council, like we approve this report from this grant body. We, we don't need to do any work besides basically pass it along to town council, but on paper, we are the recommending body. I just wanted to let people know about that. We're sort of the pass through body on this economic development grant. Not, not pass through funds, pass through reporting.
Do we have to keep the notes of how many, do we have to keep the information going? Like count up how many of these things we do and or they, they do it?
I think, well, is Erin, is that, did you say that was you? Oh, I thought Erin was on the call. Let me see what my other notes said.
It's, it's okay. We can, obviously it's not on here tonight, so we can look at it when it gets here and see what we have to do. I just don't want any of us to be assigned to keeping track of something that's happening over there because that's not our job. Okay, that's.
They're just going to send their annual report to us. We vote to recommend it to town council. So just, we're merely the reporting body. They're, I don't know, somebody else is writing a report and it's going to be shared with us. Sorry. We don't have to keep track of things. Okay. There's, there's Erin. She might want to add something.
Sorry, I was on the phone and I'd like, you guys can't hear me. Sorry, I'm late. Um, yes. So Amanda, you said it pretty perfectly. Planning and zoning does not do any of the administration. We really just kind of need your blessing in order for it to pass through. For other town structures, planning and zoning would probably take a more active role. More of the planning part, but as Amanda said, these funds are going to the CCC for those three project areas. We've got two years to spend it, so that should be two reporting cycles. And yes, the administrative arm will prepare the reports, will get your blessing, town council will pay the bills. So that's kind of what it looks like. And I apologize for the confusion. I think it's just a little, little extra red tape and we're excited. I mean, it's, it's great to get these funds, but we did have to have to notify planning and zoning of the award and your need of blessing probably in June of this year.
Thank you, Erin. Alrighty. Okay. Next item, I will turn it over to Luanne to introduce this item unless Molly, is Molly on the phone? This is item seven, discussion and vote for approval of sending letter of support to UDOT for their federal grant application for bike and pedestrian trail planning on Highway 191, 163 and 162.
Yeah, I don't see Molly on, so I can go ahead and, and discuss that. But it's sent in your, out to everybody, the, the draft letter that UDOT sent to us and the map of what it is. So, so you're all well aware of our highway plan through town, the active transportation plan that we did with Bike Utah. And what UDOT has done is expanded on that and gone to the regional plan, which Elaine Gisler had put forth quite a while ago. And what she had proposed was going from Moab to Monument Valley with a bike route. In our work here in town, we really wanted to include Monizuma Creek with the UNHS and the high schools and the, the health potential for people to get out and walk and ride and whatnot. And so in their, in their process, they've included all of that. Moab to Monument Valley with a spur to Monizuma Creek. And what it is, is it's a federal grant that UDOT is applying for in order to get planning and design assistance from federal money instead of state money. And they came to the active transportation committee to ask our help to get letters of support. They said the more letters of support that we get from businesses and from groups, individuals, residents and so on, chapter houses, that kind of thing, the, the better their grant possibility will be. And then they can get to work on this bigger regional plan. So we, we did approve it last night. Town council signed it. This, this letter is the draft letter. They don't want the letter changed really. If you want to add something to it, great, but they want the bulk of it in there so that the, the federal people in Virginia or wherever DC it looks like goes right to DC, that they know that you're talking about this particular one and they're not cutting, pasting, sending letters of support from every project. They do kind of thing. So that's the purpose of leaving the letter kind of intact. Yeah. So you can see on the map there, the red is the spur that goes to Monizuma Creek and the yellow is the one that goes up to Moab. And it was exciting to me. We won't know, like I said, till February 9th. We'll see if we're on the tier one projects and then not till March to know if they'll start this. But they kept kind of referring to Bluff as, as the, the start and the, you know, it's from Moab to Bluff and then Bluff to Monizuma Creek and Bluff to Monument Valley. So I think they, I'm hoping that they're planning to use ours as kind of the base of, you know, they've got that part done and they want to do this other part sort of thing, but don't know. That's my optimism. But hoping that planning and zoning as a different group from the, the town council would, would also send a letter of support. And we're collecting it through the, through the committee, Molly and myself, and we're, we're collecting it, collecting the letters and then sending them to the grant writers. They had a couple of grant writers, but all of UDOT, the, all of the, the high level guys were on our meeting 10 days ago or so.
Should we have a motion to do a letter?
Wait, I wanted to discuss the draft letter first. Have folks looked at that? Or want me to share that again?
You could share it again. I did look at it, but I did, I thought there was a comment too, but I'm not sure. Go ahead.
I had a comment.
Good. You go first because maybe it'll remind me what I thought.
Just, I guess this last, I, I agreed with the bulk of the letter, just this very, this closing sentence. The study meets the raised program criteria. I don't believe that anybody on planning and zoning is familiar with that. And so I, I felt like that was maybe disingenuous to include. And I, I think it has strong community support. I'm not sure. I don't know. I was, I was just a little bit considering tweaking this sentence. That's my, that was my comment. Marsha, go ahead.
I would agree with that comment on that sentence in terms of, I don't know what the raised program is and when I, when we say something like, I fully support. My, my problem with all of this has been that while I'm so grateful for us getting further down the process, like the active transportation report that was so nicely done, I certainly did not agree with everything that was in that report. And of course, no one ever will agree with every word. So that's not the problem. I guess my question is, how much of this becomes in stone as opposed to moving the process along? Can there still be some changes when the report is put out, those kinds of things? So I'm not against them moving forward and getting some things out there. I just don't want to put my name on something that I go, really? They want to put a, you know, a trail through my living room or whatever. So I'm just, how final is everything? And maybe the answer is it's not because they're trying to just get the money for it, but that's just my comment.
What, what this is for is to plan it so that, and part of their planning would be just like they did here in Bluff. They get all the groups together and all the residents and the municipalities, because it'll go through Blanding and Monticello and so on and, and get everybody's input, what they want, what they don't want and so on. And, and then they take that and make the plan from that. So this is, this is just for planning. They, they thought they could design it between here and Monizuma Creek and here and Monument Valley, but the, the north section would just be a plan.
They could design it because we've already got so much of it in that bike plan, in that active transportation plan. Right. Yeah. Okay. All right. I'm sorry, Amanda. Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm just recognizing when you said, I don't want it very substantively changed. Just wondering if we could maybe strike that first sentence in the last paragraph and then say the planning is this, planning and zoning commission supports this planning study and asks for your favorable consideration. Would that sort of address your question, Marsha, or your concern?
Yes, I believe so. Where we say we like the idea of moving forward, we just don't, you know, just end it a little softer.
So, yeah. And so the raised grants, I haven't paid as much attention to them because you know, we kind of got redirected straight to UDOT. But what this says, it's a Biden Harris, 1.5 billion available for the raised grant in 2024. It says raised discretion. It says, "Raze discretionary grants help project sponsors at the state and local levels, including municipalities, tribal governments, counties, and others, complete freight and passenger transportation." It allows project sponsors to obtain funding for projects that are harder support through US DOT grant programs. So it's, it's focused on, on reservation things and, um, underserved. It's all about, uh, yeah, like I say, I'm not real familiar with the whole Raze program, but the, but UDOT brought it. It's, uh, Chris Hall is the regional planner. Um, Jared Baird was on. He's like the top of all the regional people. Uh, they are all in support of trying to get this grant from the federal government to help them to do this. And it's all part of the Thousand Mile Trail project that the state has put into effect across the whole state. They want to do a thousand miles of trail connecting communities. It's part of that program.
So with that explanation, oh, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna say, that doesn't mean we need to leave Raze in, because I like what Amanda is doing. And then you have to say, "Planning study and asks for your favorable consideration." Um, but, I mean, I, planning study meets the Raze pro- maybe it's the strong community support part that we don't know, because there was strong community support, or there was community support to active transportation working through things. And when it came, the, the plan came out, there was just, as I mentioned, things that people liked and didn't like, which is normal, but using this strong community support sentence, we're speaking for the community and then in fact, this was the discussion between the community and zoning. So take out that, or that.
Yeah, I like that idea. With, uh, information on the Raze program, yeah, it could almost be like a, "Yes, this planning study does meet the criteria," period. And then we, yeah, I like it. Just removing the community support, because we didn't, we weren't part of a community support gathering, information gathering period. We didn't do a public hearing that we are pulling information from to reference.
And what you're basically saying then is that as a Planning and Zoning Commission, you all as a consensus support it as, as your roles as planning and zoning officers?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, because we're, I don't, I won't speak for others, but I'm always in sort of someone else paying for a study to get things done. Um, we're fortunate that our part, little part of that might be done, but it's got to fit into this. So, once again, with the caveat that while not everything in each report is perfect, it might in fact make a nice plan, so. Good.
Now-
The letter has, uh, the commission, then only the chair's signature would actually be necessary if we did it as individual commissioners. Each of us would have to sign it.
Right, so that's why Amanda just put her name on it. Yep. And I don't think we should do it individually, at least not from me. I think we should do it as a group. I-
I agree.
I make a motion to, um, s- uh, uh, ask Amanda to sign this letter in, in the name of Planning and Zoning Commission to pass along for approval of the study.
Second.
Third.
Okay. Uh, discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
With the change.
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Alright, well, thank you. Um, if you, I don't know what you use for a letterhead or if you need, maybe just the Town of Bluff letterhead again, or, um-
Yeah, we use the Town of Bluff letterheads. I'll, I'll, I'll finalize that and send it to you.
Alright, well, thank you. Yeah, and if you'll send it to, to, um, Molly and myself, then we've got a file and we've accumulated, and then we'll pass them on, so. I'll let you know how it goes, but.
There is some benefit in having the commission at the top with the town when the people at the Transportation Commission are looking at it.
The, in the letterhead, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, I think our letterhead says, is like a joint letterhead with the town and the planning and zoning. Is that, would that suffice?
I hope so.
Yeah, okay. Alrighty. Um, next agenda item, item eight, um, is transitioning building permits to an online software. So, um, Marsha, this is getting to your question of, um, the county has a new planning and zoning, uh, official, um, Kristen Bushnell. Have we talked to her? Yes, we have. She's doing, um, incredible service to the county and Town of Bluff by, um, like, filing the, the backlog of building permits and things like that. And so it's come to their attention that they need to use, um, a digital software to track building permits. And, um, they also have asked both, so there, there's two, there's two prongs to this. One is the need to have a digital software to track building permits. Second, um, the county has asked Monticello to, and Bluff to be like Blanding in that, um, we need to handle our own building permits. Um, so this, this is being equitably asked of both Blanding, or sorry, Monticello and Bluff. Um, so this means that the Town of Bluff needs to look into, like workforce capacity, like a position or contractor or something like that to help track building permits. We need to figure out who can do inspections, what that looks like, and then figure out what software we're using. Um, we are in the process of, um, seeing if we can contract out to another town, for example, um, Blanding or Moab, who have, um, are like existing building departments, and we're seeing if we can pay them, if they have additional capacity to, to handle our building permits, which tend to be between 12 and 20 a year from, from what I can tell from our records. Um, so we don't yet know what software we'll be using, because Blanding, for example, uses a different software than the county is considering. Um, so a lot of TBD here, but I just wanted to let folks know this is coming. It, it won't necessarily put more of a burden on us because, as a commission, because somebody will be hired to help with this, and this building permit tracking software will help us, um, have a lot of transparency with building permits and be able to track things. So I think it'll be really useful in the long run.
Are we doing the looking, or is the town doing the looking? What's going, who's doing?
Mayor is, is in, uh, is taking on the first steps of talking to other towns to see about contracting. Yeah. Um, the other thing we discussed too, with me, Erin, and the mayor, is that anything we try can be temporary, can be a pilot. We can always change things up if it's not working, so we don't have to be, have our path set in stone. Malia, go ahead.
Did they have a timeframe on when they wanted this transition to be completed?
Um, we were guessing by the end of the year, but I don't think there was a firm deadline.
Cool. I like the idea of the, oh, sorry.
No, no, finish your sentence.
Okay, I do like the idea of putting it all online. That is gonna be so great. Look at San Juan County getting digitized.
Those guys. Um, I just wondered about why San Juan County is pulling away from us this early on. Is it because, I mean, in other words, we had an agreement that they would do this for us, and just because they have to sort of digitize and catch up, is that why they're cutting us off? Or I'm not quite sure.
We actually don't have an agreement with the county for them to do our building permits.
Oh, hello. Goodbye. I'll shut up now.
Yep. That was something that Kristen Bushnell raised was, hey, we need an agreement. Um, this, this is partly because our inter-local agreement never went through. Um, and so if we were to, go with the software that the county's using and like work more with the county on this, we would need to have an agreement with them. So.
Is this the kind of thing that can turn into an unfunded mandate, or are we gonna put a fee on the building permits to cover this?
Great, great question, Ed. Um, our plan is to have the cost of building permits cover the cost of this contracting out of, of a building permit person and inspections, so.
We've already added fees to the list, haven't we? The LUC fee and the, and the stuff, and then we'd add a building permit fee.
Exactly. And the building permit fee is typically a percentage of the cost of the total build. So we, we will be recouping any costs associated with this. Um, yeah, once again, it also brings us, oh, oh, wait, no. I forgot to mention this. Um, San Juan County does want to help with the enforcement side of things still, which is great, because enforcement is a perpetual issue here, and if, if we have somebody who is not following the building permit process, et cetera, um, the county will help us enforce that.
That's lovely, because that's on our list to ask Chris about what, what we see. How do we go to the people and say what we see happening, or, you know, all of that kind of stuff? And we need to work that through with however we're supposed to approach enforcement. You know, we've said all along, "Hey, we noticed this going on or this going on. How do we take care of that?" And this would be the, the perfect open opportunity to, to make a plan. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's really a positive move in the long run. So. Yay. Okay. Any other questions or thoughts on this? Okay. Um, number nine, items for next agenda. So we will not be meeting again until early March, I believe, because of, is that right?
The President's Day is Monday, the 19th, so we wouldn't meet on the 21st.
Yeah. So we, we could ask Mr. Mike Hansen if he could join us at that early March, or if he wants to wait a little bit. Um, it sounds like we should do a, um, year, year planning discussion at that meeting. What else, anything else folks would like to see on that March meeting?
So would you like everyone to bring a list of goals then for the March 6th meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I assume the RV ordinance, just keep it on the agenda, next steps, because at that point, we should be done with the sign ordinance and we can pick up on RV at that point?
Okay. Sounds good. Um, okay, yeah, it's a little far out for us to know really what, what will be on the agenda, so as always, email me. For the public, you can get on the agenda by emailing us Wednesday preceding the meeting, I believe. Yeah, okay. Um, okay, let's move on to the last item is, is number 10, other. Um, I think we've wrapped up everything with Mr. Mike Hansen, who's helping us with the subdivision ordinance. I will connect with him, confirm a March date. We'll get that report that we'll read. Um, anything else under other folks want to discuss? Okay.
I would move to it.
Ah, you got me. Second.
The girls got it.
Okay, all in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned at 7:00, 7:00 PM. We appreciate everybody.
Crested View is beautiful and amazing, Amanda. Oh, my gosh.
I would finally ask if that's where you are.
This resort is so cool. Today was the first day out, and I am so excited to get back out tomorrow and keep exploring.
It's, it's, oh, it's good skiing. Oh, I wish I was telly-ing with you.
I know, that, we've seen a few, so I've been thinking about you.